Meeting called of order at the Sunshine Mall. The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called of order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Public's Meeting Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by identifying the retrospect as well as post-it notes in the Federal Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Mary Bold School, Align Bingham School, Gray Stanley School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great power for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, board members.
Patricia Dare.
Here.
Charles Buckheim.
Here.
Maria Panzarella.
Here.
Samantha Spalding.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Angel Meeby Zapson.
Naomi Davidson.
Here.
Patricia Smith, absent.
Lynn Terrell.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Also present, Mark Iannucci, Superintendent Schools and Acting Principal, Joanne Augustin, Business Administrator and Board Secretary, Maureen Gallagher, Principal of Bingham and Downing School, Janet Fiohl, Child Study Team Coordinator. At this time, I need a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from March 27th, the public hearing, the regular session, regular meeting, excuse me, and executive session.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Oh, there's only one of these today.
I know.
Any questions, concerns? Roll call.
Patricia Dare.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Absent.
All three.
All three, please.
Lynn Terrell.
Absent.
For all three. John Ward.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Glassy.
So you're going to have five.
Yeah, motion carries. Five yes, two abstentions, and two absent.
Okay. Under the financial report, I need a motion to approve the Board Secretary Financial Revenue and Treasurer reports.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Lynn, also seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Dare.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
There are no presentations this evening. However, I did let the Board of Education know, and I'll say publicly, that I did receive correspondence from Mrs. Thomas. She gave the Board a copy of her letter that we all have here. So that's the only correspondence that we have. But Dorothy gave me one personally, well, the Board. She addressed it to the Board, so I wanted to make sure that the date, that that correspondence was recognized. That's okay. At this time, I, we are open for public comments on agenda items only. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems and/or complaints through initial contact with the staff member or members involved therein and the chief school administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the Board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to topics to be addressed on the published agenda and limited to length of three minutes. The Board President will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to comment on any action items on this agenda. At this time, does anyone have any public comments on agenda items only? No? Okay. We're going to move along to the Secretary's report. Is this, Joanne, a bulleted list, or?
Yes, that's basically the same as the main highlights of the items on the yellow sheet. And within the last month, it was the 13, 14 budget presentation, submission to the county. I've also done the reimbursement request for IDEA and the NCLB fund for the expenses for the month of March. Also, doing the, had done the reimbursement request for the Race to the Top grant. Also required to make sure that everyone does their personal financial disclosure statements and send them to Sussiter County.
She was very diligent.
So I'm pleased that everyone has done them, so I can do that, I can finish that off by the end of the week.
Thank you for stalking us.
Yes. And the other thing I want to get everyone to complete, and I think we'll have that done by the end of the week, is the online board self-evaluation. So we have that done. Finished up with the documentation that the county wanted for HUSAC and submitted that to Aunt Volk, so she's happy with that. And we've begun planning some of the facility work for the summer, some of the major projects. So that's underway.
The only question I have was everything was okay with the buzz and presentation to the county, the submission to the county?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Joanne? Move along, Mr. Iannucci.
All right. Superintendent Report, enrollment for the district as of March 28th was 868 students, including 12 out-of-district student placements. Currently, there are 856 students in the district. As you see there, there's no reports of HIV from last time we met. One of the things we worked on right after the spring break was the technology plan, which was submitted as of Friday to ERRC for review. Again, I'd like to thank the team that worked with that, Joanne included, Mr. Scholli, Mrs. May, Dr. Pfeil, Mrs. Gallagher for getting that in. I'd also like to thank everybody for the transition time over the last couple of weeks. You're welcome to me and making life as easy as possible. The board office has been great, people in the board here have been great, we're trying to give everything we can when I can. Pop my head in, I haven't been as improved as much as I'd like, but moving there over the last couple of days, especially for testing, to see how things are going. We've got a greater start than anything else. Having the opportunity to go kindergarten classrooms last week, those kids are great because I know we have some of their peers in here, their siblings and stuff like that, so it's fun to see those kids. Oh, I know you, you're mine. It was good. So it was fun to see different aspects of that. Living with a six-year-old at home and a two-year-old, I see it every day, but then saying that in different places, it's great. I had the opportunity to attend the art show at Downing School last week, which was very interesting, a great turnout. My son, who's into art, so he enjoyed that. It was nice to have to wait in line to get in, because he was turning out really well. This is too old, I saw her in the basement.
No, not the basement, that's the gym.
Did he really just go there? Walked down a lot of steps. He teaches a lot of dance. Now you keep calling that the basement.
It is the gym.
Gymnasium slash cafeteria.
Slash everything. I apologize to that comment. The gym, Mr. Ward.
So it's been good the last couple of weeks, and we're looking forward to bigger and better things as well. I said I'd like to thank Mr. Mungo for his service throughout the Runnymede Public School District, who will be leading us in a couple of weeks, who will take a new job up in the Nahali District. And, uh, what's up? No, I don't think, yeah. And, uh, yeah, a lot of things come up interview-wise, we have a full slate of things we still have to interview. Child Study Team Director, Curriculum Supervisor, Vice Principal, as we saw, some staff members are probably sending their letters in. There's some teaching positions I'll have to fill, and the Child Study Team as well, talking about placements for next year for staff, different needs for the students being first. So I'm just going to change all three of the numbers, I believe, for staff members, we hope to let them know well before school is let out, but in the next couple of weeks. I'll meet with each person personally, if we're moving someone from a building or moving someone from a grade level, I'll make sure to reach out to that person and have a meeting and hear their concerns or whatever. That's where we are.
With that being said, at the work session, I forgot to mention that we need to have a public meet, a meeting next week for some contracts and different things that need to happen the first week of May. And while we're doing that, Joanne mentioned to me earlier that she has two dates that they're...
Second and sixth.
The second, May 2nd, which is a Thursday, if everyone can get their calendars, I'm sorry, I meant to do this in our work session and I forgot. Thursday, May 2nd, or Monday, May 6th, we can pick the time. It will be a very brief meeting, we'll just, we'll just have some, some things that need to be approved as soon as possible, and there will also be some ethics training. How are you for Thursday or Monday?
I'm fine.
You're good? I'm good both these. You're good both these?
I prefer Thursday.
I prefer Thursday myself.
Don't go there. I prefer Monday, but I'm, it's, either day is private for a third day, totally.
Well, I just need a quorum, sorry.
I may not, I need you, so that's it.
Okay.
Just say it.
And so I have one, two, three, four.
Two, two, two.
On your schedule.
Monday, definitely out.
Okay.
Thursday, I don't know.
Okay. Monday would be the best day for me, the 6th would be better.
She doesn't need us.
Do you think I can get here?
I should have made me.
Because I can go.
I need you.
I'm only working till 1:30, so. On Thursday or on Monday?
Every day.
Oh, okay.
So if I, and I also could reach out to Patty and Angel, so if I am having four yeses right now, I'm confident, then I'm just going to go with the sooner date, because there's some things. What time would you like to meet?
Was that again, May 2nd?
May 2nd, I'm going to go with. Not that I don't value all of you. Um, May 2nd, what time works best?
I'm good usually.
Can we go, can we go a little earlier, like 6 o'clock? Instead of a 7 o'clock meeting, can we go 6?
I like that.
Okay. So we're going to schedule a special meeting for May 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Let's do the 6 for the training then.
6 for the training. That takes about...
Camp hour, 4:00, 5:00.
And then we'll go 7 o'clock, special meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. The meeting, it will be very brief, we'll just, some things that will need to be approved.
Okay.
Sorry, I can't help you that day, I'll be here. But I can get you home. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry about that. Everybody good? Okay. Principals' reports, nurses' reports, building and grounds' reports, special education reports are all attached. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Chaz.
Just a wee bit of update on building and grounds. Uh, we need to go back to when we had the elections in November. We had two near accidents in this parking area. What's, what's the status on, I think we talked about some patents, some additional hours of possible signing.
Well, what I did is I got ahold of the Runnymede Borough, John Gunn.
Okay.
He was supposed to get back to me with signs that say one way, we're going to put them in the island, and on the other side, by the fence, field fence, and then the other side of the island, so that I can see it's clear it's one way.
Okay.
I think he went out with knee surgery or something.
Knee surgery.
Yeah, so I know that he was working on it before he went out, and I was just waiting for him to come back, because everyone would try to supply the signs for us, and we put them in. So there is going to be something done that's in worse.
Thank you.
Progress.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay. ETA, is there a little update for us?
We're, um, why do you now for our basket auction, 125 baskets, I think we have now, still coming, 130 still coming in. You're all welcome to come, $20, and you receive 25 tickets Friday night, doors are at 5:30, what we have included up front, and we'll start calling the numbers, we have eight. It's going well, we got a grill, we got a TV, we have, uh, we have a whole round of DJ, these are all prizes, we have tons and tons of gift cards that each classroom needs, such big baskets and...
We have a maintenance basket.
And we have a main, 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 our playground lady is here, made up her own, then the lunch program, gave some of their little snacks from the lunch program itself, you know, and some little free, like they could get a free snack from the lunch program or something, so everybody's kind of competing, you know. We kind of edge and won, that's what we have. Yeah! So, um, you know, hopefully everybody will be here, we'll have a good time, and it goes smoothly. We're really very relaxed at this point, at this time last year, we were staying late every night, but we started working, and some people came one night and did a couple hours, some people came another, so it's worked out. We have a large group of moms coming at 3:15 on Thursday to move them all, that took us like two hours, I should have given the baskets in there, because once, even though we have a number now, once we start putting them on the bleachers, you have to adjust with how they fit in there. So that's a long job that, with the help of maintenance, they're going to have tables just set up to get baskets, so all those moms will move, and the poor group of girls that love doing that, yes, that's a big one, will start working on that, and it'll be done early. So we really think we're way ahead of, we kind of have it down to a science, nobody's overworked or anything. I guess not strong. We do have raffle tickets, if anybody would like to buy, it's a $1,500 Visa gift card, and that's going well, so $5, we're going out for a book of five, if anybody would like them. And that really went ever bigger, because everybody could use that, maybe they didn't want to go to Vegas, we have a Vegas trip, when you're on a TV, everybody has a big TV, so this one seems to be going ever very, very well. You know, they have those things up.
Okay, so we could see you on the way out in the main office for some raffle tickets?
Yes, I have to.
Okay. Should have stopped. All right. Thank you, and good luck, I'll see you then. Um, committee reports, Camden County Educational Services Commission, progress. Progress. Yes, it's only like two meetings here. New Jersey School Boards?
Uh, I have a meeting coming up mid-May.
Mid-May.
I'll be attending.
Okay.
And they're sending me a packet of information of areas that we're going to be discussing for the meeting, I have to get that. Those are coming.
I'll be attending the meeting on Friday, for our public relations up in, on New Jersey. Yes, I'll be gone on Friday.
Good. So you'll let us know about it next time.
I will have a full report.
Thank you.
Yes.
Black Horse Pike Regional.
Bachelor DC, the same as our new superintendent from here, and he'll be starting in July 1. And now we're seeing they're hiring curriculum supervisor, director of personnel, we have a lot of people moved, we have, still have our incoming, a principal in there, so that seems to be going well, parents are very happy with...
Is that a trade?
A trade. And parents seem to like and communicate well, some things.
On New Jersey School Boards?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. No, they weren't.
On April 15th, Governor Christie signed into law the Bill S-2057, the Anti-Big Brother Act. This bill was passed by Assembly in January 63 to 10, and unanimously by the Senate in February. It requires that any school district that supplies students with laptops, cell phones, or any other electronic devices that can remotely track student activities and usage of said-so devices must also provide the parent or guardian with a written or electronic notice that it may collect information or activity from the student. It must also be copied by a form which the parent or guardian must sign and turn into the school, and must be kept on file. A school district that fails to provide the notification required by the bill would be subject to a $250 fine per student per incident. The State Department of Education will collect fines and put the money in a fund to provide portable computer, computer equipment to at-risk students. This bill also applies to charter schools and will go into effect July 1st, 2013. An upcoming event, um, the NJSPA Academy Program statewide that Naomi's going to, April 30th is the Regional School Safety Meeting at Southern Technical Park in Owen University, registration and dinner at 6:00, program at 6:45. May 4th is NJSPA Legislative Committee at NJSPA Headquarters in Trenton. Registration's 8:30, meeting at 9:00. May 9th is Camden, Gloucester County School Board Association's Spring County meetup at Avon Elementary School in Haddonfield, registration and dinner at 6:00, program at 6:45. And May 11th is my mandatory term, governance one, at the Washington Temple High School, registration 8:30, program nine to four. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's okay.
Uh, negotiations, someone else have something?
Me, I had a meeting this week, and we discussed several things, and we are ready to move forward with our first proposal next week. We're going to be meeting with Mrs. Hummel and her committee on the 30th at 6:30 PM, and our, our representation, Mr. Stern, will be...
That's April 30th?
Correct.
Okay. Next week.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So on our new business, I need a motion to approve item under property and transportation, items number one through four.
I make a motion to approve items one through four.
Second. Motion made by Maria, seconded by Joanne. Any questions? Yes.
I'll say 400, does everybody else say 400?
Oh, yeah, we should probably. We were corrected for number three, Butch, that cameras have night vision and high-resolution viewing range of 400 feet.
Up to 400.
Up to, to 400 feet instead of 100 feet. Thank you for that. So that's the only correction that we need during our work session. Any other questions?
I have a question concerning number four, the doors, fire-rated doors. These are, if I'm reading correctly, interior stairway doors.
Yeah, for Bingham and Downing.
For Bingham and Downing.
Well, this is just for...
This is for Bingham, right?
Okay, regardless, my, my biggest concern is our, what kind, number one, what type of glass setting is on these doors?
It's going to be the standard view glass, it's about five to six inches by, I think it's 30, 30 inches, that's required by fire marshal.
And how far above the floor does this glass begin?
Starts just about where a doorknob is.
Would it be possible to still see a kindergarten child on the other side of that door?
If you're standing in front of it, absolutely.
Okay, that is my biggest concern, okay. Or preschooler too, for that matter, because we have preschoolers at Bingham, so that's my biggest concern.
Roll call.
Patricia Dare.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim. Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes, did you make a motion to this?
Yes, Maria and Naomi.
I did.
You're welcome.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Personnel, I need a motion to accept items number one through three.
I want to make a motion to accept with regret, both, um, numbers one through three.
A second.
I'm sorry. Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Dare.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Iannucci already recognized and thanked publicly Mr. Mungo for his few years of service here. However, the Board of Education would like to publicly wish Mrs. Dorothy Thomas and Cynthia King, thank them first of all for all their years of service to the Runnymede School District, and wish them well in their retirement. So, please pass that along for us. Under Finance, I need a motion to approve items number one through eight.
Eight through four.
Well, I need to stop, because I need to read resolutions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve numbers one through eight under Finance.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by Chaz. Roll call.
Patricia Dare.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
At this time, I need a motion to approve the resolution listed in number nine.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. The resolution reads, "Whereas, the Department of Education has recommended to the New Jersey State Legislature that the funding of our public schools in the state of New Jersey shall be based upon the average daily attendance of schoolchildren, which is contrary to current law, the School Funding Reform Act of 2008, which provides funding on the basis of average daily enrollment. And, whereas the Department of Education has determined that an appropriate average daily attendance rate of 96% shall be the level of attendance for all New Jersey school districts, and districts that demonstrate an attendance rate of less than 96% shall suffer a loss of school aid for the 2013-2014 school year. And whereas, a 96% attendance rate is equal to a child being absent from school no more than seven days in one school year, and whereas, it is the opinion of the Runnymede Board of Education that a 96% attendance rate is an arbitrary standard to apply to all New Jersey school districts and is contrary to the history of funding in this state and the School Funding Reform Act of 2008. And whereas, New Jersey school districts must staff equip, feed, and transport our children based upon the enrollment of students, and we do not send teachers home, or stop the buses, or turn off the lights, or sell their textbooks when a child is absent for health or any, or other family reasons. And, whereas, the recommendation of Department of Education to penalize districts by reducing school aid when a district cannot demonstrate an average daily attendance in excess of 96%, simply shifts the burden to support a thorough and efficient education to the local taxpayer. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Runnymede Board of Education thus hereby declare that the recommendation of Department of Education to provide school funding based upon the attendance of children for the 2013-14 school year is contrary to current law and fails to recognize that districts provide staff and resources for inadequate public education for all enrolled resident children in their school district. Then, be it further resolved that the Runnymede Board of Education hereby requests its local legislators, in particular, and all legislators in general, to reject the recommendation of the New Jersey Department of Education to fund the public schools of the state of New Jersey based upon the attendance of resident children, and to comply with our current school funding law which provides state support based upon the enrollment of resident schoolchildren. Roll call.
Patricia Dare.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
And John Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
At this time, I need a motion to approve items number 10 through 12.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by John. Roll call.
Patricia Dare.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davidson.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella. Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve items number one and two.
I make a motion through one, two.
Motion made by Patty.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Dare?
Yes.
Charles Buckheim?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
I need a motion to approve the Camden County Elementary League membership resolution.
I make a motion to approve the Camden County Elementary League Member Association Resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Naomi, seconded by John. The Board of Education of the School District of Runnymede, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, here with enrolled Runnymede Public Schools as a member of the Camden County Elementary League to participate in the approved intraschool athletic program sponsored by the Camden County Elementary League. This resolution is to continue in effect until or unless rescinded by the Board of Education and shall be included among those policies adopted annually by the Board. In adopting this resolution, the Board of Education adopts as its own policy and agrees to be governed by the Constitution, bylaws, and rules and regulations of the Camden County Elementary League. A photocopy of the minutes signifying the adoption of this membership resolution is attached. Administrative responsibility. The League must rely upon the voluntary compliance by its members of schools in enforcing the standards set forth in bylaws and Constitution. Toward that end, the principal in each member's school has the affirmative obligation to report to the Camden County Elementary League any violations of these standards. The fact that a school has disclosed that there has been an eligibility violation will not relieve the affected school of sanctions that may be imposed against it pursuant to Article not eight, excuse me, of the bylaws, including the forfeiture of games or events. However, the failure to disclose a violation may be grounds for imposing additional sanctions upon the offending school. Roll call.
Patricia Dare?
Yes.
Charles Buckheim?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Panzarella?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
John Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
At this time, we are going to open for public comment again on non-agenda items. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems and/or complaints through the initial contact with the staff member or members involved there and the chief school administrator prior to petition in the Board of Education. Complaints should be brought to the Board after the appropriate school staff has had reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to length of three minutes. The public is reminded that all public complaints against a district employee must be made through a specific grievance process. A description of this process may be found in Board of Ed Policy File Code zero-one-six-seven. This policy is available upon request in the Office of the Board Secretary. Any individual naming an employee in a complaint before the Board of Education without the employee's permission could be cited for violating that employee's civil and contractual rights. At this time, is there any public comments? Yes?
Hi, this is Ruth, um, thirty-six North Carolina, down in Runnymede. I unfortunately missed a couple meetings. Did you approve the calendar yet, the school calendar for next year?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Um, with the switch in administrate, uh, chief school administrators, um, we wanted the input from Mr. Ainucci, and with all the state regulations that are coming down, we're still working on a calendar that would be beneficial with professional development days. So if that doesn't happen at our special meeting next week, it absolutely will happen in May.
I actually did have another question about, um, actually one of the agenda items.
Okay.
On the, when you get a proposal for the security cameras, did you get several proposals for that?
Yes.
Because it says like, you know, for the locksmith, that was the lowest one to see.
Yes.
How many proposals do you have to get for?
At least two. And I have an IT person arranged for that as well, and with the camera cost of installation, radar security was still the lowest.
Okay. Okay, what's that coming?
Any other public comments?
Actually, can I ask something?
Sure.
I, as a parent, would appreciate not having such a long spring break. I have just, you know, just my two cents for that comment.
Thank you.
It just really makes that week so hard, you know? And by the, you know, I see, now I know next year Easter's later. Easter's almost a whole month later next year than it is this year. So, I mean, I can see how they could really use a break by then, but a whole week is like really long.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruth, we will take that under consideration.
Okay.
At this time, I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel issues.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Chad.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi, you're on fire. Whereas, while Senate Byron M. Bayer Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve, requires all meetings of the Runnymede School District Board of Education to be held in public, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B sets forth nine types of matters that may lawfully be discussed in executive session without the public being permitted to attend. And whereas the Runnymede Public School District Board of Education has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas the nine exceptions to the public meetings set forth in NJSA ten colon four[1633.54]